Now, we will move on to item six, Conduct of Business. City Clerk.
Item six A, Adopt Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Execute a Contract with West Gills Associates to Update the Urban Water Management Plan in an Amount Not to Exceed $84,000, $84,370.
Director Tan.
Yes, good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. I do have a brief presentation on this topic to share. Um, let's see here. Let's check out. Alright. So, you all see my, um, PowerPoint presentation? Alright. Okay, so the objective of the item in front of you tonight is to adopt the resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with West Gills Associates to update the urban water management plan in an amount not to exceed $84,370. The agenda is as follows. I'll provide a brief background on the urban water management plan and provide you with information on what is urban water management plan and why is it required, what are the key elements in the document, then I'll discuss how we selected the firm that will be assisting the city with the plan, and then the fiscal impact, and then I'll go over the alternatives and next steps, and lastly, the staff's recommendation. So what is an urban water management plan? The urban water management plan is a state mandated document that requires water suppliers to assess the long-range water supply and demand over a 20-year period. The city last completed the plan in 2015. It was adopted by council back in June of 2016 after public notification and hearing process. The document is a planning tool to ensure there's adequate availability and reliability of water supply to meet both current and projected future water demands. The document also serves as the foundational document for water supply assessments, and those are required by SB or Senate Bill 221 and Senate Bill 610 for certain projects, usually larger projects that has more than 500 homes. And then they have to refer to the urban water management plan for various water assessments. So why is it required? In 1983, the Californian Legislature enacted the Urban Water Management Planning Act, and the law required urban water suppliers who serve more than 3,000 customers or provide more than 3,000 acre-feet per year of water supply to adopt this plan. It is required to be updated every five years and submitted to the Department of Water Resources for review. And the plan is required in order for the water supplier to be eligible for DWR, Department of Water Resources grants, loans, and any drought assistance. And the city is an urban water supplier. We currently serve about 11,400 water connections. And as previously mentioned, the previous document was adopted back in June 2016. So what are the key elements included in the plan? The plan will assess, you know, the current and projected water use over a 20-year horizon. Long-term planning documents such as the general plan and specific plans will be reviewed, and the water demands will be assessed. The plan will also analyze potable and non-potable water supplies. The plan will review the city's water supply from San Francisco, you know, Public Utilities Commission, and water production from groundwater wells. The plan will also prepare what's called a drought risk assessment, and this DRA requires water suppliers to assess water supply reliability over a five-year period. And that examines, you know, water supplies and water uses and reliability under a prediction, a reasonable prediction for drought, you know, for five consecutive dry years. The water code also now requires the suppliers to address seismic risk to various water system facilities and to have a mitigation plan, and therefore seismic risk of water systems facilities will be evaluated. And the plan will also develop an effective water shortage contingency plan. And this plan is a document that provides the water suppliers with an action plan for a drought or during a major water supply shortage. So in order to select a consultant, we issued the request proposal, or RFP, back in October 2020. The city received two proposals, one from West and Associates Engineering, and the other from West Gills Associates. Our staff reviewed both of the proposals on whether the firms understood the project and their approach to executing the project. Staff also reviewed the firm's qualifications and experience of the project manager, as well as the entire team. And staff also determined whether the firms had qualifications related to the development of this urban water management plan. And based on staff's evaluation, staff is recommending West Gills Associates to complete the plan for the city. And this West Gills Associates project team has intimate knowledge of the statewide and regional water quality, water issues, and has demonstrated a track record of developing these urban water manageable plans. And they have also done water supply assessments as well, and as well as hydraulic analysis for various different agencies in Northern California, including Fresno, Modesto, Sacramento, Santa Rosa, and Bullman, as well as other water districts. And the firm also completed the San Bruno's, the city's, 2015 urban water management plan. So as for the fiscal impact, you know, the fiscal year 2020, 21 water operating budget includes a budget of $100,000 to complete the plan, and the current contract with West Gills Associates is $84,370. Therefore, no additional procreation is being requested. As for the alternatives, there are two. The council can direct further review of the submitted proposals for selection of a different firm from the proposals, and then we call or request the staff to issue a new RFP. As for the next steps, once the council authorized the word of this contract, staff will coordinate with the project team, have a kickoff meeting with the firm. Our staff will work with the firm to complete the urban water management plan within about six months. Then staff will form the public notification and hold public hearing process. Then the document will be adopted and finally submitted to the Department of Water Resources. So as for tonight, staff is recommending to adopt the resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with West Gills Associates to update the urban water management plan in an amount not to exceed $84,370. This concludes my presentation, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Director Tan. Any questions or discussion from colleagues?
Yeah, I have a question.
Councilmember Mason.
To the mayor. Thank you for the presentation. Is there, I had previously requested that when these plans come to us, that we also receive an update on what has been accomplished in the existing plan. Do we have any idea of what, I believe you said the original was 2016? Do we have any idea of what has been accomplished since 2016?
Yeah, this is, this document is very different from the water master plan document that you, you know, that you're mentioning, Councilmember Mason. This one actually is more of a plan to guide, you know, developers and for the city to have some sort of a long-range goals to determine what our water supply needs are here in the city. So, you know, this would actually have a lot of information related to some of our, you know, current and future developments and what's been, you know, allocated or what's been included as part of the actual overall demand assessments and water supply assessment. So there's really no, like, recommendations like for projects per se, like in a water master plan. So it's a little bit different with, from that document.
So is this also, how would you say this is different from the water system master plan that we approved for $238,000 last January?
Correct. So the water system master plan is a document that actually assesses the actual distribution system of our water. So the consultant would do a hydraulic analysis, determine, you know, what the capacity needs are or the fire flow needs are, you know, within the city, right? Then through that, recommendations will be provided for, you know, short-term, long-term goals. So there'll be a lot of different, various different projects that will be determined as part of that, you know, where there'll be, you know, replacement of various different pipelines to meet fire flow analysis, replacement of tanks because they don't meet the age, you know, they've extended their useful life of the tanks, and or upgrades of some of the pump stations because they don't meet the future demands per se, that maybe have to upsize the pump station. So it's a little bit different from this document. This is a state mandated document that actually looks at the long-range, you know, water supply and the needs, you know, for the city.
So then if it's, if it's not as specific, I guess, what, how do, how would we know that we're following the plan?
So the Department of Water Resources actually has a table of content that requires every single urban water, you know, supplier to actually follow that. So what, the consultant has the, you know, information, and they have, they've been doing this for many, many years. So they have to follow the guidelines that's included as part of the DWR because this whole document has to be submitted to the DWR for their final review to ensure that all the requirements that they're requiring is included as part of the plan.
Okay, so the, my, my question, I understand that it's required. I think my question is more around, it's required. My guess would be that it's required because they want action to be taken or they want to make sure that we're following the mandates or the state guidelines. So what is the measure that's being taken to make sure that it's, that check, you know, we've submitted the plan, but what's the measure being taken to make sure that we in fact are in compliance with what the mandate is or the regulations are?
Sure. Through the mayor, may I respond?
Yes, City Manager.
Sure, City Manager Javon Grogan. Councilmember Mason, let me try and parse the issue. So the plan we're talking about tonight is an urban water management plan. And even though it's called a plan, it's not the type of plan that has deliverables that we need to execute upon. It's a state mandate that ensures that we have identified that we have a long-term water resource to cover both our current and projected need. And so what we're here tonight to do is to get authorization to do that plan. Once that plan is complete, it comes back to the city council for adoption. So you get to see the plan, and then we submit it to the state saying we have complied with your mandate that we do a plan. If we don't do this plan, the hook is that we can't apply for grants, loans, and other drought tolerant assistance from the Department of Water Resources. That is distinctly different from our water system master plan that has embedded within it specific projects that we need to do and fund over a horizon. And when you requested that information, what we took that to mean is that our master plan that called for us to do work at the city, when we bring those back to you for extension, we will report on the last master plan was done, for example, five years ago. Here are the projects we've done, but we haven't been done. This is just a distinctly different type of plan. It's essentially a state requirement saying that we have identified that we have long-term resources to cover the build-out both currently and in the future. And your knowledge on that we've done that is when the plan comes back to you and we submit that to the state.
So is there a plan for the build-out?
So the build-out happens as private developers purchase property or come to the planning department and says, hey, I want to build on this vacant lot. And so we make sure that there's a connection fee for that. But we, when that happens, that property, let's say it was zoned for multifamily, right? We, because we've done this plan, we have already accounted for the water generation that would happen by that parcel that's developed. And so there's not sort of a direct linkage when, of when development happens to this plan.
Okay, I'll hold my other questions.
Is there anybody else, any other colleagues have questions? Okay, Councilmember Mason, you said you were holding questions, so this would be the time.
I don't know if there's any public comment.
Okay. I'm seeing no hands, Councilmember Mason, and maybe we'll give them an opportunity if they do, they can, as you're asking yours. I do have one, but let's give them a minute too, just so others may wish to come in. Vice Mayor?
Yeah. So basically, as the city is projecting its growth, we have to make sure that we have enough water to serve it. And this plan goes through and identifies, and I think the biggest thing is making sure that we conserve water. And there was a big 20% reduction requirement that had to be met by 2020, and I believe the plan did show by the numbers. And I could ask the director that we made that 20% reduction. It seemed like it was a pretty easy get from people, basically. And yours truly here, I reduced my water usage. You know, I changed, I changed out my lawn and put in something different that was drought resistant. And I think a lot of people have done that, that they're really being careful on their water usage, being that we got out of a drought. We're kind of back in one and again, but here we are, talking about it, and it's raining, it's raining. But people are really concerned about the cost of their water, so they're reducing the use. So my question is, is that, that the 20% reduction, that seems to be one of the bigger things there, and that's, the question is, is that still on target to be met?
Director.
Yeah, so you're talking about, I'm trying to understand the question, Councilmember Medina. You're talking about the water conservation efforts, that, the percentage efforts. And that will be, you know, a study as part of this plan as well, and so it will be included. And yet just, again, it's overall plan is to look at the long-range horizon, right? Because the city actually has what is a limited amount of water supply from SAPUC and then our wells. And so, you know, taking that into account and plus all of the developments that may be happening in the city, you know, do we have enough water supply to meet that long-range goal? This is what the entire entirety of this plan is about. Plus the water conservation efforts, and what do we do during drought, for instance?
Right, Mayor?
Yeah, I mean, so it was projected that we were going to have a reduction, and this plan's going to verify that, that we met our goal in the conservation of that reduction. So it's really very different from the technical nature of engineering of how our water system operates and what's recommended. This is just, in my view, pretty much showing that we do have enough water to keep, to keep our city supplied within the future as we grow. Correct.
Agreed. Alright, we have a member of the public. City Clerk, if you can bring in Mr. Smith, and then we'll turn it back to council. Or we'll go back to Councilmember Mason, who had fellow questions.
Just one moment, Mr. Smith, I'm trying to get you unmuted. Mr. Smith, are you able to unmute yourself? I can't do it on my end. It's not allowing me to.
I'm unmuted. Uh huh, can you hear me? Hello?
Yeah.
Yeah, really quick question. I just don't really, on this, on this plan, the contract, it's just a plan, right? There's no actual, there's no actual project. Thank you. Just semi-developing a plan. And not developing, and that's it, thank you. Did staff catch that? I know it is a little breaking up, but maybe it's the storm. I think there was just clarification, and colleagues, you can help me if there was.
I'm still here if you want to.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The question was very simply, my, I'm just trying to understand that this plan, not to exceed $84,370, is to, is to update. There's no actual projects involved to execute. There's no groundbreaking, no work to do as far as constructing anything. It's just a plan to update. And. Urban water management plan that's already existing. It's not building.
I'm sorry, Mr. Smith, you're breaking up pretty badly. I just went back on mute.
Okay, let's try it one more time. How about now? Okay? Okay, so, so, I'm sorry about this. So I'm closer as I can get. So the question is about the plan, the urban water management plan, the amount not to exceed $84,370, is just for a plan to update an existing plan? And it's not to do any groundbreaking work or to do any builds or any kind of, any kind of like physical work. It's just to actually create a plan or update the plan. It's not creating a plan from scratch. Am I to understand that correctly? And that's my question.
Thank you for your input. Director Tan, can you?
Yeah, that's correct, you know, because every five years, the city is required to update this urban water management plan. So the last one was done in, or completed in 2015. And so that document will be updated to the current plan with the current requirements by the DWR. And so there aren't any projects per se, you know, like you have to build this pipeline over here or you have to upgrade this pump station. No, that's not part of this plan. It's, it's the, it's more of a long-range study to determine, you know, whether the city will have adequate water supply, you know, in 20 years down the horizon with, you know, development start being proposed, you know, in the city in the future.
Thank you. Other questions?
Good morning, Mayor.
Okay, sorry, I had to switch over. First, I have Councilmember Salazar, and then we're going to go to Councilmember Mason, please.
Alright, thank you. So Jimmy, thanks for the report. And I went back and looked at the 2015 report, just to kind of refresh myself on what was in there. It's a 420-page report. So first of all, thank you for not embedding that in our council packet. I really appreciate that. And the only question I had, so we only got two proposals back from the request, and there was a pretty wide range in the price of the bid. And so, you know, I always trust staff's advice, and I know that there's a lot of different factors that go into weighing which proposal is better. But can you maybe summarize, you know, what some of the major points were that led towards selecting West Gills? And I know they did the original one, they're clearly more qualified. You know, and in listening to the, you know, the public comment, I know that a lot of evaluation goes into this, so it's really not just updating the report. It's really, you have to do a lot of evaluation of the system, and you have to understand, you know, what components are in place, where the water's coming from, what's being purchased, what's being pumped. So I get the complexity that goes into it, but I just wanted to get a little bit of a clarification on, you know, the justification for going with the more expensive option.
Sure. There are two firms that submitted a proposal through the RFP process, and, you know, West Gills and West and Associates. And, you know, the city had reviewed, you know, always, you know, reviews based on qualifications. And of course, we do take into account, you know, costs for these proposals as well. But the other firm, you know, didn't have quite the experience that, you know, West Gills has. And they're also based in Southern California, so, and they don't have a lot of the, you know, the regional, you know, issues that, you know, that they, the knowledge that West Gills has, you know, up here and working with all the various different firms, you know, different agencies, you know, that West Gills has, you know, in Northern California. So I know sometimes, and then when we were looking at the proposal, it was somewhat interesting that the labor hours for the, you know, other proposals were a lot more than what West Gills had in their proposal. You know, the other proposal had 400 hours versus West Gills only had 358. But, but West Gills, you know, of course, you know, the labor efforts or labor rates were a little bit higher than what the other firm was. And so, you know, we do, we did have to kind of evaluate that, and we determined that, you know, even though, you know, the person, you know, West Gills was a little bit more costly, but, you know, they, we, they have done a great job for the city in the past, and then we haven't run into any issues. And sometimes bringing a new firm on board, you know, will take a lot of effort into, you know, learning, you know, our system, and then we'll spend, have to spend more time, you know, trying to work with the consultants, you know, to do that, so.
Understood, okay. Alright, thank you for that.
Councilmember Mason.
Yeah, so I'm trying to still see. I think that the issue I want to be clear isn't whether it's due to the state or not. I don't have a concern around that. I just want to make sure it's clear what work's being done on the investment that the city has already made into the existing plan. And so from what I'm hearing, you're saying that it's, that there's absolutely no deliverables in that plan, that the only thing that plan is really a report to the state on where we are. Is that, is that a synopsis? Because I do want to make sure there's no deliverables in the, in the plan.
Director Tan. Sure, Javon Grogan, City Manager again. There are no project deliverables, as in things that we need to improve in our system. There are, in the plan, targets to be met. We do not know if we've met those targets until we update the plan. When the plan comes back to you, it will say where we are on the targets that were in the 2015 plan. For example, as Councilmember Medina mentioned, within the 2015 plan, there is a target water reduction of 20% by 2020. In updating the plan, which we're tonight wanting to enter into contract to do, once that plan is updated, that will have within it where we are on those target metrics. We will know that when we get the plan, and then assuming that the draft is complete and there are no errors, we will then bring that plan back to the city council and then forward that plan to the state of California, and that satisfies, that satisfies our requirement.
And then, there's apparently within the plans, the, like, certain, certain, I guess, I don't know if they're recommendations or requirements, but such as what I, I just went to the state site and read what the requirements are for the plan. So for example, one of the, one of the, one of the mentions is a water shortage contingency plan. Another one is a detailed plan of current and future water use. So are those things that you're saying that the consultants will handle in updating since a couple of years ago? And we don't have anything, one way or the other, to determine whether this has been done already?
So my understanding is that we have data that we will provide to the consultant. They will analyze and put together the report to ensure that we have met those metrics, or at least state where we are with those metrics. And so we will again know that once we undertake an update of the plan. And Director Tan, is there anything that I'm missing or any elaboration that you can provide?
You're on mute. Sorry. Yeah, I know, City Manager Grogan mentioned it correctly. And so, and, you know, there's many, many topics that will be covered as part of this, you know, urban water management plan, and then those will be, you know, studied as part of this process, and then brought, and information will be included as part of the plan, and then brought to you, to City Council. When we adopt it, there will be a presentation by the consultant, you know, of all the various different topics, and to let you know what's going on, the staffs.
Okay, and then I'm just wondering if this is part of the regular process? Why this wasn't budgeted at the onset of the contract approval when the, when the original contract was let?
So the contract for West Gills was done five years ago when they did the 2015 plan. We did not know that they would be the contract. We did not know that they would be the contractor that we would select now. And so the normal process is we we did the prior plan, we undertook a contract process to select them. Five years later, now we're undertaking a new contract process to select the new vendor. I think part of your question is, did we know that we would be updating our five year plan in fiscal year twenty twenty one? Yes. Could we have made an estimate and budgeted for that around budget time? Yes. The typical method that we follow for these master plans, considering that the water fund has sufficient resources to cover it, knowing that it is over the city manager's spending authority of seventy thousand dollars, is we don't make an estimate because we're going to have to come to the city council for authorization anyway. And so we undertake it as a part of our work program to do the RFP, get the bid, identify the amount. And when we bring the contract for approval, we both bring approving the contract and appropriating the money. And so it's just a methodology difference, but we are going through the normal process to update this five year plan.
And I also want to add to what City Manager mentioned, you know, we we did, you know, foresee that this plan needed to be updated. So the water operating budget included a hundred thousand dollars for this, you know, for this item. And so it was already included as the, within the fiscal year, you know, twenty twenty one budget. And so this time around, you know, we're just getting, as the city manager said, you know, it's over his signing authority. So we're coming back to the council to get this contract executed.
Thank you for that, Jimmy.
And one last question, when when is the, when is the due date again?
It's July and end of June. So we will come back to council after this plan is completed and we will go through the, you know, the public hearing process and notification, and then we will have to adopt the plan before July.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If there are no other hands or if there are no other questions, this is a action item and is requesting a resolution for adoption. Any action by council?
The chair, I'll move the, approve the resolution.
Is there a second? Thank you. Salazar Hamilton, thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason? I'm sorry, Councilmember Mason?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina?
Aye.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.